All customers with an urgent response to the crisis. With compassion, sincerity and concern.
With compassion, sincerity and concern.
Patience, kindness and respect.
Patience, kindness and respect.
I promise that I will at all times.
I promise that I will at all times.
Conduct myself in a manner that reflects positively.
Conduct myself in a manner that reflects positively.
On the fire department and the city of Detroit Lakes.
On the fire department and the city of Detroit Lakes.
Finally, I promise to follow the policies of the fire department.
Finally, I promise to follow the policies of the fire department.
Uphold the laws of our state and nation.
Uphold the laws of our state and nation.
And the ordinances of the city of Detroit Lakes.
And the ordinances of the city of Detroit Lakes.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
To the best of my abilities so help me God.
To the best of my abilities so help me God.
Alright, you're officially in.
Alright.
Good to go?
Yep.
Thanks for serving, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Without objection by the council, I'd like to move to item 10A. As Vernell has another meeting, let's go to 10. So item 10A is regarding scheduling electrical system tours, Vernell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Yeah, a lot of you have toured water or wastewater facilities that public utilities has or has built in the last couple of years. But some of you probably have never seen any of our electric facilities, whether they be the substations, our transmission systems, or what's going on in south power tunnel under the south sub and that 115 line. So I'd like to send a calendar invite out for a couple of days at the end of the month, sometime the 26th, 27th, 28th, or 30th of July, notice the 29th is not in there. We've got some things going on that day. So I'll send out calendar invites, and if you'd like to take a tour of our electrical facilities, just respond and we'll get some time set up and give you a tour.
Okay. Thank you, Vernell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Elizabeth Waifel from Flaherty and Hood is here this evening and would like to address the city council regarding the annuals, for her annual CGMC city visit. It's a awful lot. Hi, Elizabeth.
Hi there, thank you, Mayor, for that kind introduction. And I want to thank you and all the council for allowing me to speak. It's always exciting to come to Detroit Lakes. Congratulations on your 150 year celebration. I told the mayor and Kelsey I actually stayed the night and spent much of the day working on the beach and in coffee shops, but also checking out the town. I really liked all the sailboats everywhere, it was kind of fun to see. So congratulations on that. And also, I think you're normally used to seeing me with a PowerPoint presentation. You're probably wondering, where is that? So disappointed. But, you know, the legislative session did not officially adjourn until last week, and so we're still putting our materials together. In fact, I'll be sending Kelsey an electronic copy of our final report when that's also done, hopefully by next week. But anyways, I think most of you are familiar, but for the audience, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities is an organization, we're up to 109 cities right now. It's a, the growth continues of our organization, but 109 cities working on issues that are relevant to Greater Minnesota, including local government aid and property taxes, economic development, annexation, land use, transportation, environment and energy, and labor and employment. It's been an interesting year. I'm sure all of you noticed, to hear this is your first time back in this building. For us, it's also been interesting. The legislature has literally been meeting year round. Through this month, they have met some portion of every month since February 2020. That's 18 months straight. We've been actively engaged throughout that time period on bonding, dispersal of federal funds, plus other priorities. You know, one thing, you would have thought maybe there would be a little shift in tone and a little shift in things with the election last fall, but there was no shift in control. Senate is still controlled by the Republicans, House still controlled by the Democrats, and so they continue to tussle as the only divided legislature in the country. Legislative during the pandemic was really different, as I'm sure it was for you operating this city. But the Capitol was closed to the public, that finally reopened last month. House and Senate office buildings were closed. I still haven't been in either one of them, and there were no in-person committee meetings. Very, very few in-person legislative meetings. There were a few that would let you meet, you know, on the side for a cup of coffee, but not many. So lobbying was done by Zoom, email, phone and text. You know, the one sort of upside of that is that it did allow us to include city members in our visits. And in fact, Vernell Roberts participated in quite a number of meetings with me on some wastewater issues, and I have to say, he is a fantastic lobbyist, I'm glad he's not going after my job. But we adapted to that new normal. You know, one of the things we did was these, we did advocacy theme weeks, and that's actually when Vernell participated. We did one on LGA, one on water and wastewater issues, childcare and housing. We did guest columns throughout the state on these specific issues, social media campaigns, video, and a lot of Zoom meetings with legislators. Our top goals probably won't surprise you. You can see more in depth in this handout I gave you, that a little bit about what we were proposing, what we accomplished. But, you know, focused on making sure there were no LGA cuts, trying to get a bonding bill done, trying to do something about PFAS, get some money, more money for childcare, and trying to work on city street funding. LGA was a big priority for us this year, getting it paid on time and in full. I think many of you may remember some of the past times when we've had budget deficits, LGA is one of the first things they go after. So it's always really important to us, especially when we think, you know, they were projecting a budget deficit last May of several billion dollars. So we knew that we had to be very aggressive about defending it and leaving nothing to chance there. You know, we, again, a lot of meetings with legislators, guest columns that got published in media outlets throughout the state. We actually produced a video on LGA with city council members and mayors from throughout the state on that. But then something changed. In February, we got the new budget forecast, and we were now seeing a surplus. And we even heard earlier this week that that surplus continues to grow. We'll find out what they do with that next year. But what it meant with, between that and the federal money coming in, is that LGA was deemed safe. But we still, once we knew that, knew that we also needed to take care of cities like Detroit Lakes, because under the formula, as you probably know, you were sort of expecting to lose about $97,000. So there were two things we really worked on, you know, once we knew it was safe, and that was getting enough money to make sure that our cities like Detroit Lakes were held harmless, so that you're getting the same money, you know, for this upcoming year that you did last year. And then also pushing for some bipartisan discussions that will be going on during the interim and at the beginning of next session on the LGA formula. Again, trying to look out for our members. The last time it was updated was in 2013, so we think it's really important to be looking at those factors and how it affects everyone. So that's something we'll be spending quite a bit of time on. Now childcare, this is an issue we've really started working on over the last several years. Childcare's been challenging in Greater Minnesota, and the pandemic only made things worse. And so, you know, we really were pushing hard on, quite frankly, more money. And we got that in a number of different ways. Got money for the Initiative Foundation, for a D-Childcare grant program that guarantees at least 50% goes to Greater Minnesota. Funds for redevelopment, we were able to make childcare facilities in eligible use, and then also helped direct some of the federal source money going towards childcare. So really important there for us. Another thing, you may remember maybe five, six years ago when we first started talking about broadband here. CGMC was really engaged in that early effort to try and improve broadband coverage through out Greater Minnesota, but we kind of handed it off to other advocates. This year was something, again, where we stepped up with our partner GMNP and other advocates to help push for more money, and we saw record amounts going into that. Now, you're probably asking yourself, well, what was Elizabeth doing all year? Well, let me tell you, I was working on PFAS. If you don't know what that is, that is per and polyfluoroalkyl substances. And those are chemicals that, you know, keep your jackets waterproof, keep your Teflon non-stick, and has been in the past used in firefighting foam. Of course, the problem, as you may know, with PFAS is that it is harmful to human health. And we're starting to find it in water sources, but Midge's had that problem, the East Metro's had that problem. It's, you can get it out of drinking water, it's pretty expensive to do that. Bigger challenge is if it gets into your wastewater, right now, there's no way to get it out of there. And that's really, really a challenge. So rather than sort of sit there and act in fear of, you know, waiting for the regulations to come down, we have been pushing, working with the league and several other organizations on a municipal source reduction strategy. And we were very pleased to see that went through. And we were able to get that funded. What that will do is help our wastewater facilities identify what are the top sources, how do we keep it out? The other thing that we did was I spent as much time on offense, excuse me, as defense as I did on offense. And there was some efforts to try and basically impose liability for PFAS. That, the goal was to try and get at the folks who are actually putting, getting PFAS into our water, but it would have really affected cities in an unintended way. So we were actually able to stop that legislation. I felt really good about that. We are probably going to be looking at that over the next couple of years, but it's really important to us that our cities are not held liable for a problem they did not create. Other things we worked on, we try, environmental wise, we were able to, we've been pushing on trying to get more money for chloride reduction and saw that come in from a couple of different sources, saw some more money for the point source implementation grant program and a whole bunch more stuff. Now, I probably could talk for hours on environment, but you have other things to do. So I'll just point out that we have a one-page handout just on the environmental work. The last thing I'll mention is, again, year-round legislature, we spent a lot of time working on bonding throughout 2020 because they just couldn't get that bonding bill done. We were pleased to see it finally got done. You know, we spent a lot of time on media, coalition work, direct advocacy. And in October 2020, we saw a $1.87 billion bill pass with a lot of funding for some of our top priorities like water infrastructure and BDPI. We were really hoping and pushing for a 2021 bonding bill, but I think with that late passage and really sort of the big gap in vision between the House and Senate, we haven't got it done. It's possible we'll see one in September, but right now, I think that's going to be something we're going to be really focused on. Well, I know we're going to be really focused on for 2022, still not sure if we'll see anything in 2021. We have been laying the groundwork for 2022. In addition to pushing on bonding, the LGA formula examination and revision is going to be another big piece of what we're doing. We'll also be watching redistricting, you know, that'll be coming on, and that's going to have a great impact on Greater Minnesota. It will be an interesting session because it's a big election year. All legislative seats, because we'll have new districts, are going to be up, and we've got a gubernatorial race that will impact how the legislature and the governor behaves. But we will, as we have in the past, maneuver our way around it. Just finally, events coming up, sounds like you all know, and some of you will be stopping up for our summer conference in Alexandria. Good to hear. Our fall conference is in Wilmer. And our Legislative Action Day, also a popular event, will be on March 2nd. I want to say a big thank you to the city of Detroit Lakes. You know, we got 109 members now, but you guys have been there for the long time, one of, you know, our really early members. We really appreciate all the activity and work that your city has done through the years. It's that sort of help and stepping forward that really helps make us successful. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Elizabeth?
I would like to comment, though, that we belong to the Coalition for many years, like Elizabeth said, and I think it's one of the best investments that our city has done. They are definitely our eyes and ears down in St. Paul. They're virtually every meeting there is, and whenever something comes up that concerns their members, they're interneting us, they're letting us know what's going on, telling us who to get ahold of to get things passed. And just the last few years, they've helped us with our wastewater treatment plant, helped us with LGA, they helped us local option sales tax, they do so much good for us. And our return on that investment is unbelievable. And it's because Elizabeth is just one part of the team, but they've got a lot of great team members. And I'm really glad that we're part of your group.
Thank you.
Did you record that?
I should have.
Any other questions or comments? We appreciate you coming up, and I'm glad you were able to spend the day in Detroit Lakes, Elizabeth.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ron, without objection, can we move to 7B?
Yes, 7B. This item is consideration in approving the DLCC donor recognition plan. The committee met today on this. What involves is that the LCC is going to do an internal naming rights on rooms of specific areas. And I'm going to have Peter explain a little bit what that is, and maybe Kelsey wants to add in also on that. So Peter?
Sure, thank you. Thanks for having me. As you recall, we were here about two or three months ago seeking your authorization to proceed with renovations to our ballroom and some things in the, on the home side of our building to allow us to provide better events for our current activity, and then hopefully bring new things into our community. And as part of that, we're basically committed to raise all the money to make that happen. We committed to having 30% of that on hand and 90% of the pledges. So we began our pledge raising process, it's going very, very well. But there's been some interest on some of the donors for having some form of recognition associated with their contribution. They see what they're doing, making an investment in the community, making an investment in the DLCCCC, but would like to see some recognition for that. So our management agreement has some language in it regarding naming, more specifically of the building, but we're here to seek your approval to be able to name portions of the building, or names, rooms within the building to recognize donors. And so that's it. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Kelsey or Charlie, any comments on that as it pertains to the management agreement?
It fits within the management agreement. Okay, we're allowing to do it.
Okay. Any questions for Peter or discussion? Alright, go ahead, Ron.
Okay, the committee recommended to approve the DLCC to do an internal naming rights on rooms and specific areas inside the DLCC, and I so moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to allow naming rights for certain portions of the building at the DLCCCC. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Without objection, I'd like to move to liquor and gambling, item 9A, which is the Roasted Restaurant Platform. Barb's here from Barb's Hair and Body, and I think she has a few comments that she wants to make. You want to start out? That's fine.
I'm Barbara Steger from Barbara's Hair and Body Care. I've owned the salon for over 15 years. Bonnie Lee had it for 24, so it's been a salon for 35 years. We only have the front entrance, we do not have a back door. So by losing three parking spots right in front of our business has really affected our clientele. We've got quite a few elderly ladies and gentlemen that come and go. So the fact that three parking spots has been used for the Roasted has really affected our business. A lot of clients have been very concerned for the safety of it, not only for them walking and coming in and going to our business, but also for the people sitting on it, because it's right in the street almost. So a lot of people have concerns. I've gotten over 141 names of my own clients. I did not go to other businesses and talk to them as far as who wanted to sign it or had problems with it. So just in my own small business, 141 people have said this has been a hindrance to them. I'm here just hoping that somebody can, maybe if not explain it, maybe it can be removed sooner than what was expected, just due to the fact that it really is affecting so many people. And that we do have a small community, and as a business of 35 years, it's very important to be able to continue doing my business.
Maybe I could have the city staff, Kelsey, maybe explain for the rest of the council that wasn't at the liquor and gambling meeting today, how the whole thing evolved to this point and...
Yep, Mayor and Council, a little background on this. So of course, last year with COVID, we saw a lot of restaurants and bars requesting temporary expansion permits into different green spaces, different public sidewalks, and even parking areas. And one of those requests was from Roasted, and to go into that parking space in front of their business. So along with their request, they also requested some sort of better seating area, rather than just having road barricades, they requested a platform. So ultimately, a decision was made last summer using the CARES money to purchase that docking section. But it was not installed last year because of basically manufacturing lead times just didn't get completed last year. So back in, I think, March or April, Roasted came in and requested another temporary expansion permit to include the parking area in front of their business along with the sidewalk. The council did approve that, including that 48-foot docking section. That was approved, and then the actual docking platform was installed, I think at the end of May, was installed. And the temporary expansion permit that's in your packet basically allows that into October of this year. And as we talked about before, you know, we issued several of these temporary expansion permits to other restaurants earlier this summer, or earlier this spring. And ultimately, that's going to have to be a discussion item also for next year on what to do with these temporary expansion permits if bars and restaurants again request it.
So when does it expire?
It looks like the letter that we issued was through October 31st of 2021.
So is there any comments that any council member wants to make regarding this? I know, Matt, your committee, I understand, is, was just a discussion item, but they weren't recommending that we cancel the expansion permit at this time, correct?
That is correct.
Any comments?
They do have a back door as well, is there a way that that can be moved to the back? I know Price's Jewelry Store has a beautiful garden area behind their business because they've got a front and back door that wouldn't affect other businesses, and it would be a better safety issue for those that are actually dining at the restaurant.
Yeah, the only thing I would say there is that alley is just, you know, two-way, and it really would be, I think it would be tough to do in the back.
Because there's another building next to them, they were granted to have access to both of those buildings with front and back doors on both of the buildings. There would be an actual space in between the two?
Oh, is there? I guess I'd have to look, by the way.
Yeah.
Only driven by there 10,000 times, but... Any other? Go ahead, Ron.
Well, I was gonna say, I've heard from a number of businesses down there about the parking spots that they are taking. And the concern is for the businesses, a lot of times that area sits empty. You might have some people in coffee in the morning, maybe a few for lunchtime, but the rest of the day sits empty. And they say, here we got this thing sitting empty, taking up three spots. So it is, it is kind of a tough on neighboring businesses that rely on parking. So I don't know what we're going to do with it, but it's a concern for other businesses downtown.
We've actually seen ambulances have to swerve around it as they're using the Washington Avenue to get to things. And in my mind, that would, again, not be safety for our community as a whole. So if that could be looked at further, I would appreciate it.
Okay, well, there's no action, I don't think, tonight, there's no recommendation, so I guess we'll continue to give it further thought, but tonight, we're probably not going to do anything, so...
Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Okay, so I think we've got everybody that was here that wanted to get out of here early, so we'll go back to the top of the agenda, and I believe we're at the Community Development Committee agenda. Chairman Josephson?
Item A is consideration to second reading and adoption of ordinance 480 amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Detroit Lakes relative to fences. Should I continue, or?
Yeah, go ahead.
We should do minutes and consent agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. The minutes are... I'm not used to being in this environment, I guess, or something, I don't know what it is. The minutes are before the council, the regular city council meeting held June 8th, and a special city council meeting held July 1st, 2021. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that wishes to correct or add or change the minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion for their approval as printed.
Someone?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes, the regular city council meeting held June 8th, and a special city council meeting held July 1st, 2021. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda is before the council, and all items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered separately in this normal sequence on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that wishes to either add or remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for approval.
I move that it be approved as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as printed. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Dan, sorry.
Okay, go back to this one?
You have the floor.
Perfect. Alright, I'll go back and read this one again. Consideration to the second reading and adoption of ordinance 480 amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Detroit Lakes relative to fences. Last night at the CDC meeting, there was no recommendation coming out to split, so we're kind of stuck at a headway of not sure where to go, whether we make a recommendation of approval or just letting this one die.
The recommendation from the planning commission was unanimous.
To approve it?
Okay.
So you don't want to make a motion, Dan, or? Does anybody want to make a motion? Make a motion, would you at least vote?
So moved.
Remove?
Yeah, and then I'll make a comment as well.
Okay, you're moving for approval, right?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to give second reading and adopt ordinance 480. Go ahead, Jamie.
You know, Dan Winters is the person that really should speak to this because he's been working on it longer than anyone, both on the planning commission and CDC. And, but he was not able to be here tonight. I think the ordinance has come up because people are asking questions or problems are arising, and they wanted, they asked staff, I think, to clarify some of the items that are coming up. And they've done, you know, hours and hours and hours of work of trying to kind of clarify these things. And I don't know if anybody has anything to add, but that's my understanding, and that's why I'm in favor of it.
I get it. Comment?
Go ahead, Dan.
So I understand all the work that's been done on this. The planning commission has looked at this over and over again, staff has spent a lot of time on this. We did get to a point where we cleaned up a lot of the issues, but then we started tacking on other things that seemed to be overbearing on painting both sides of fences and materials and arbitrary bits and pieces of what is and what isn't allowed. So that's where it kind of fell off the table for me, and that's where I'm not going to support the second reading of amending the zoning ordinance.
So Larry, in reviewing what the recommendation was from the planning commission and the different things that were added by the Community Development Committee, how does that reflect on staff time? I mean, is it going to be a lot more administrative?
I think that types of materials has clarified what people can use and what they can't use. And that sometimes can make it more difficult because some people will try to push the envelope. But I think that it's pretty clear that we want people to use new materials that are suitable for fences, that are designed for fences, rather than clothes baskets and milk jugs or whatever they want to try and make their fence out of. So I think from that regard, it's going to be better. I think it, most of the language clarifies it. Not all fences are painted, but those that are stated or painted have to be done equally on both sides so you don't have a tie-dye look on one side and a nice even look on the other side. You don't want to have any spiked fences, so we're trying to regulate those things. I don't think it will take any more staff time.
Okay. Further discussion?
I look at this, and I think I'm going to vote no on this for the mere fact of, I think we clarified a lot of things for homeowner, but I think we muddied the water. And the biggest thing I'm hung up on is we can have a three-foot-high fence, unless it's a chain-link fence, then it can go to four feet. But somebody could have a row of hedges that are 10 feet high, and that's okay. I think we should either keep it three foot, keep it four foot, just keep it simple. So that's why I'm going to be voting no.
Okay, further?
That part of the ordinance is not a change, that's the way it's been in the last.
Okay. Any further comments?
Well, I just think that the planning commission has been working on this, and they've put a lot of time into it, the staff has. And you're never going to have a perfect plan with any fence. But I think that we should go ahead and take the vote and see where it lays. And if it doesn't pass, then we're going to have to work on it some more.
Okay. Anybody else want to chime in? If not, I'm going to call for the vote, and I think I'll take a roll call vote. Jamie?
Aye.
Natalie?
No.
Matt?
No.
Madeline?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Dan?
No.
Wendy?
Aye.
Passes. Is it a simple majority, correct, on the ordinance? Okay. So the motion passes, second reading is given, and ordinance 480 is adopted. Dan?
Item B is consideration to second reading and adoption of ordinance 481 rezoning from B3 auto-oriented business district to I1 light industrial district at 804 Randolph Road. This is Leighton Broadcasting Building. Last month, we had a first reading, and nothing has changed, and CDC reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to give second reading and adopt ordinance 481 rezoning 804 Randolph Road for the new home for Leighton Broadcasting. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Second reading is given, and ordinance 481 is adopted. So one is Leighton Broadcasting, gonna move.
I don't work for that.
Dan?
Hopefully by the end of the year.
Oh yeah, you're over. By the end of the year?
Hopefully by the end of the year.
Thank you. Dan?
Item C is a consideration to resolution approving conditional use permit to allow a car wash in B3 district at 1415 U.S. Highway 10 West, Mulkey Properties. Larry, you want to give us a little bit of background on this?
This is a, a car wash, it'll be out by the subway on Highway 10. Car washes are allowed as a conditional use in the B3 district. I think that's a holdover from when the car washes were noisy things, that they're not as noisy as they used to be, and I think you might want to look at amending our zoning ordinance to allow them as a permitted use in the B3 district, but that's something we can do in the future. We didn't get anybody that showed up for the public hearing on this, and the planning commission, Dan, must recommend approval.
CDC reviewed this last night, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit at 1415 U.S. Highway 10 West. The conditional use permit will be for a car wash in the B3 district. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Item D is consideration to resolution approving a preliminary plat of Pine Wood Estates at 1364 Long Lake Drive. Drew and Ashley Larson, Larry, you want to give us an update on this?
Yeah, this is a four-lot residential plat, it's at the end of a cul-de-sac. The owner would be required to install the utilities for each of the lots and to construct the cul-de-sac or keep the cul-de-sac at the end of the road. So that would be part of the development agreement that they must sign.
CDC reviewed this last night, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to give, to adopt a resolution approving the preliminary plat of Pine Wood Estates at 1364 Long Lake Drive. Discussion?
There was a question last night on that about the way the lots were laid out. Did we get any que, or answers from?
We did not get any answers.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Item E is consideration to a resolution approving the final plat approval of Anchor Klein at 20074 Klein Road, Gary Heitkamp. This is, was reviewed last night at the CDC meeting, the committee recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the final plat of Anchor Klein at 20074 Klein Road. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Item F is consideration to extension to April 13th, 2022, to submit the final plat of Bristland First Edition. Larry, you want to just?
Well, essentially, our current ordinance requires the final plats to be submitted within 100 days of their approval. We did have an amendment in our subdivision ordinance when we started this a couple of years ago that would have extended that to a year, but we haven't passed those changes to the ordinance, and so they are requesting an extension to 2022. It does take longer to get through all of the environmental issues, and they're having a little struggle with the, where to put the store on home on, so it's gonna take a little while to get that.
CDC reviewed this last night, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve an extension to April 13th, 2022, to submit the final plat of Bristland First Edition. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Item G is consideration to a resolution in the matter of authorizing the application of a joint legacy grant funding for Detroit Mountain Recreation Area. CDC recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution authorizing the application of joint legacy grant funding for Detroit Mountain Recreation Area. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Okay, we'll move to the Public Works Committee. Chairman Sukie?
Item I was just discussion regarding Green Step Cities. We have an interested group of citizens that is working as a team to, to assist us with that. We were pleased to have Dr. Hickey and some of their team members with us. Item B, consideration to the request from Mike Larson to place no parking signs on the west side of Cheryl Avenue. This is in conjunction with being overrun during the Water Carnival softball tournament out there. We're hopeful that this will help keep people from parking on his lawn. So this is temporary, no parking signs to see how that works, and so the Public Works Committee moves to have those no parking signs placed temporarily.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve some no parking signs along the Larson property just during this tournament, is that?
Correct.
The term? Okay. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Consideration to the request from MMCDC to add handicap parking on Greystone Plaza. This was to, they were in hopes of getting a permanent handicap parking spot on the, on that Annex Street there by Greystone Plaza. They have a tenant who is handicapped and would like to have a vehicle parked there all the time, not without a time limit, and there are time limits on the parking there. The Public Works Committee spent quite a bit of time in discussion on this, and we moved not to add a handicap parking spot there, just because it's opening Pandora's box to parking dilemmas all over town, as you can tell. There are parking dilemmas all over town, and this, this would just add to the problems there.
Okay, so you're moving for approval?
I'll second it.
No, we're moving to not approve.
Moving to deny him, sorry.
To deny it, yeah.
That's correct. You really aren't supposed to make a negative motion, but...
Is that a true story?
That's true.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Two to nothing.
Consideration, item D is consideration to resolution ordering a preliminary engineering part for Pine Wood Estates. We just discussed that in the above Community Development Report. This is for Pine Wood Estates for Drew Larson. Do we need to say anything other than just we're, we're moving to order that preliminary engineering report?
So we need a motion?
Yes. That's what it means when you say you're moving.
Okay. Is that a true story?
Sorry, Jamie, Jamie's giving me the attitude of like, okay, don't say that.
It's good to be back home, isn't it?
We're close enough to poke ya.
I gotta get Dr. Roberts' rules, I'm looking for a refresher. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
When you get to be my age, you can do stuff like that. Item E, consideration to a resolution accepting the preliminary engineering report for the Mulkey Properties subdivision, street and utility improvements, and setting an improvement hearing for August 10th. We reviewed this at the committee meeting yesterday and moved to accept that preliminary engineering report, and we will set an improvement hearing for August 10th. What, do we need to add anything else?
Are we still scheduling the improvement hearing, or did you just want to accept?
I have not heard from the developer.
So we aren't going to schedule a hearing then?
So the motion is just to accept the preliminary report, right?
And, and not set though.
Okay.
And we'll just set the hearing at a future date upon hearing from the developer.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution accepting the preliminary engineering report for the Mulkey Properties subdivision, street and utility improvements. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Item F, consideration to a resolution accepting the preliminary engineering report for the Long Bridge Heights Phase Four Street and Utility Improvements, and are we setting an improvement hearing for that one?
Not yet.
And we are not setting an improvement hearing for that. Public Works reviewed this with John, and we accept the preliminary, move to accept the preliminary engineering report.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution accepting the preliminary engineering report for Long Bridge Heights Phase Four Street and Utility Improvements. Discussion?
I can help you with that.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstention.
One abstention. The motion carries.
Item G, consideration to scheduling a special city council meeting for July 27th at 4:00 p.m. to consider bids and award the construction contract for the Willow-Frezy Home Street and Utility Reconstruction Project, and we're doing that with our fingers crossed.
So we still want to have this?
We still are going to do that, yes. So we move to schedule that council meeting, and...
But we could add other items to the agenda, correct?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to call a special city council meeting July 27th at 4:00 p.m. Discussion?
I won't be here in that, just to...
Okay. Notice. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Item H, consideration to a resolution accepting a report and setting a public hearing on the abatement of diseased trees for 2021. The Public Works Committee accepted that report and moves to set a public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the report regarding diseased trees and to set a public hearing on the abatement of diseased trees for our August council meeting. Discussion?
I, I, I think maybe that, I've had a number of people call me with diseased trees, and they're under the impression that the city pays for all diseased trees in town if they're bad, and that, and that's not so, so I'm wondering if Kelsey or Sean could give us what, what they do, which trees we do take down at a city's expense, and which ones the, the property owners are gonna have to take care of.
Sean, you want to tackle that one?
I, I can.
Okay.
Mayor and Council, what we do is we have a forester go out and evaluate the trees throughout the city, and we are responsible for any trees that are on city property, including parks and boulevards, but if they are on private property, the homeowner is responsible for taking down and removing them or using our contractor.
So how do we handle the money, Sean? Do we send them a bill, or do we put it on their taxes, or how does that handle?
It, it does on their taxes.
So we, do we give it up to you? Do we pay it upfront, though, Kelsey, or?
Yeah, it's just like a normal special assessment, so they get notified of the assessment. They can either pay it off in advance, or it goes on their taxes.
And that includes grinding out the stump, Sean?
Correct.
Okay, further questions? We did have a motion to second, because that was like, yep, three minutes ago, I mean.
We did.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Item I, City Engineers Monthly Stat, Project Status Report. John, you're on.
Very good. Mayor and Council, just to try to zip through, got a few things going on here. Starting off at the top, Westlake Drive, Legion of Six, continued to work through the legal matters associated with that and the property acquisition, right-way acquisition. There's been quite a bit of discussion from both sides, trying to get to some sort of resolution, an agreement on that so that we can move that project ahead next spring. Still somewhat hopeful that we can maybe get the utility relocation work going this fall, which would help immensely with the progress next spring. So that is all, report on that. Westlake Drive from County Road Six to the River, also scheduled for next year, so if you haven't connected the dots, it's a fair thing goes to plan. We have Westlake Drive from Legion all the way to the river, down for a good portion of the summer, which is obviously gonna create some traveling convenience for a good chunk of people.
John, was there some other construction that was gonna have an impact on that? Wasn't something on Highway 59?
No. What it amounts to is, is Westlake Drive and our Willow Street project that we're currently bidding. I'm trying my darndest to get those to offset, so one is available and the other isn't, and I'm not sure that my dream's gonna come true there, but...
We need a mic, so that...
Oh, I'm sorry. Anyway, so Westlake Drive from Six to the River, we are working on that in, trying to get some preparation on the trail alignment figured out. The county's got a grant from Ship that's helping fund some of that analysis, and I would expect maybe in the next month or so, we'll probably be bringing that to the council for presentation and gathering some input on, on what that trail should look like. The Berquist subdivision, that was awarded at the special city council meeting, probably looking at starting construction on that sometime in August. South Washington Avenue, that project's basically wrapped up. We do have some work that we need to do on the sailboat yet, but that's coming together, and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, that is nearing completion. Long Pine Estates Phase Two, that project's basically done, other than some turf maintenance. The Bristland subdivision, nothing really to report there, other than the developer continues to, to make some progress there. I'm uncertain whether or not they'll make any construction project, progress yet this year or not. Willow Homes Frey-Z, I mentioned earlier, we'll be opening bids next week on that. Hoping to start that project yet this year. The plan was to start and focus on, on a portion of Willow Street. I don't know if that's gonna come to fruition. There's some supply issues, material supply issues that could come into play that would cause us to delay that portion, go back to the downtown portion this year. We'll just have to play that by ear. Long Bridge Heights Phase Four, we talked about that tonight and accepted that report. We'll see if that moves ahead. Lake Forest Seventh Edition constructions, oh, probably three-quarters of the way complete at this point. Be, all the utilities are done, street work is underway with curb and gutter going in next week, so probably sometime, finish up sometime in August. Highland Drive, having some discussions with Becker County. Staff level, we did, and the county is actually meeting with the township tonight to discuss how that project would move ahead and what that's gonna look like in terms of who's gonna lead that, what the cost participation's gonna be, things of that nature. So more to come on that, but still targeting a construction project for, for next spring. And then Willow Springs, we'll have to pick that up sometime in the next couple of months here and, and discuss what we're going to do in the way of street improvements, so. Questions?
Any questions for John? So we don't have any action there, do we? Madeline?
No.
Okay, anything else? Thanks, John. So we're down to the Finance Committee.
Okay, the first item was seven eight, it's consideration to a resolution approving the 2021 budget amendments, and I'm gonna call on Heidi to explain what's going on with that.
Okay.
Okay. Excuse me. We, the council approved the 2021 final budget and levy in December of 2020. There were a couple of items that just didn't get updated in the final version, and this resolution, resolution is just updating those three minor changes that need to be made.
So you're saying these were approved by us at the time, and they just didn't make it into the document? Is that what you're saying?
The final document did not reflect these numbers, so the council did not approve these as they were. But these are, these are all items that had been discussed by the council previously, and were in contracts that are already in place.
I'm sorry?
Can you give an example?
Sure. So there are, there are just three items, so the one is a capital contribution to the DLCC. This is something the council had talked about a number of, a number of years ago, prior to my time, but we started with a certain contribution from the liquor fund and then increased that by 3% each of the last few years. That 3% increase, we did factor that into the portion of the liquor store transfer to the general fund, however, where the general fund actually pays the money out to the DLCC, that number didn't get updated. So that's one of the numbers. The other two are arena rental agreements, that just, those numbers were still the 2020 figures that I had in there. I didn't update them to the 21 figures that were already in place in those contracts, and so that's just clarifying and updating those based on those current contracts.
Okay, are there questions?
I'd say it changes the amount to about $3,500 compared to what we had before on that. But the, the committee reviewed this, and we move to go ahead and, go ahead with these updated rates. Nice move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution approving the 2021 budget amendments. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Item B, we just did earlier, and then item C is going to be moved out until next month. We still need a little bit more information, and that's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to the Public Safety Committee. Who's going to take that?
Okay. Chairman Leonard's not here. Dan's gone right now, but we, we did have a great Fourth of July in town, and it's because of the great job between the police department, the job they did, also with the sheriff's department for water safety, and also the fire department, the work that they've done. So we had a good turnout, and I don't know if either one of you guys would like to say something about it, but, but overall, it seemed like the fourth ran very smoothly, and it's definitely because of the, the job and the way you set it up to work on it. So appreciate all your work and efforts for your staff. I believe you had 16 police officers on staff. They had two other reserves people came in. They had officers from Frezzy for the police department, so we had a, you know, good, good enforcement down there, and everything was kept well under control, and it was a well-behaved July 4th.
Anything else, Ron?
None, Your Honor.
Okay. Chief Swanson, we did get you a couple of firefighters tonight before you got here.
I know. Running late.
I had to give you a hard time. Matt, further items on the Liquor Gambling Control Committee?
Yes, item nine A is taken care of. On the additions to the agenda, we have six A, the approval of issuance of a temporary intoxicating license for Detroit Lake Shrine and Color Guard for their September Fest event on September 4th. We reviewed this and make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to issue a temporary intoxicating license for the Detroit Lake Shrine Club and Color Guard for the Septem, September Fest event on September 4th. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item six B, approval for a temporary three-two license for Holy Rosary Church on August 22nd, 2021. We make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a temporary three-two license for Holy Rosary Church, August 22nd. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
That's all, Your Honor.
Okay. So how come these are six A and B? I don't understand that.
That's just a calculation.
Ah, Carrie, what was that?
Good old word, trying to auto correct.
Okay, thank you. So we took care of the public utilities, and there's nothing further there, right, Madeline?
That's correct.
Okay. Anything from the city administration or other staff?
There is one additional massage therapist license that I need approval for that was on the added agenda.
Okay. Somebody like to introduce a motion to approve the massage therapist license for Sonia Colmas?
I so move.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the massage therapist license for Sonia Colmas. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Tom Clevey has reached his term of service in the Development Authority, and I hope we, at some point, can recognize Tommy's done a tremendous job on the Development Authority, but I'd like to recommend the name of John Reaver to replace Tom. And I would entertain a motion for approval of John Reaver.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve John Reaver to the Development Authority. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. And Carrie, before I leave, will you grab me, and I'll get you his phone number and email so you guys can reach out to him? GL Tucker has agreed to serve a third term on the Development Authority, and I would recommend GL Tucker be reappointed.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the, another term for GL Tucker in the Development Authority. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. And I'd also like to recommend the name of Terry Ider to serve on the park board to fill out the seat of Bruce Imhold through February 28, 2024.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Terry Ider to the park board to fill Bruce Imhold's vacant seat through February 28, 2024. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. I don't have recommendations yet for library board members, and I'll try to have those for you in August. Any other items, Kelsey, from the staff side of things? Some informational announcements, the 150th birthday week is happening July 25th through the 31st, with the, the big birthday party celebration on the 29th, and there is a website that has all the events, right?
Mm-hmm. DL150.com.
Okay.
And then also, Mayor, on the day before, on July 28th, at the police department, we're going to have a ribbon cutting in an open house, because the police department's pretty well finished up, and if you haven't had a tour of the police department, please come on that day, July 28th, between 4:00 and 7:00 for the ribbon cutting. That's the day before the big birthday bash on the 29th.
So we'll do the ribbon cutting towards the beginning, right?
Yes.
All right, Chief, you ready for us?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It's an awesome-looking building, and I liked the video that you distributed. That was really a nice deal, too, so.
You did a really good job on it. Thanks for watching.
The Budget Committee meeting, schedule is, is listed in the, in the information, and the Budget Committee will be the Finance Committee. Our joint, next joint governance meeting is October 5th at Becker County, and the balance of the 2021 city council meeting dates are there. So if there's no other items to be brought?
I, I just want to say that with that, with the budget meeting, all council people are invited to take part in that, because that's a big, big part of our years is our budget, and we would, as many council people as come on all those mornings would be great. It just makes the job easier, having everybody there discussing what to receive our budget to look like in 2022.
So active, noncommittee members can participate in the discussion, Charlie, in your opinion?
We post it as such.
I think we post it as such now, so think that we could just generally call them as special city council meetings, and that way anybody would be able to go.
Okay, so all those dates you saw where it said Budget Committee meetings, those are all special council meetings?
And everybody's so welcome.
You're welcome to come.
Yes.
Anything else from the staff?
Mayor and Council just want to mention, Elizabeth Wyfle mentioned earlier, too, about the CGMC Summer Conference. I've heard from a couple of you, I'm thinking about just driving down and back both days, not staying the night, so if you're interested, let me know, and we'll get us registered.
Sounds good. Wendy, anything else from, from the order?
Nothing for me.
All right, Dan?
Nope.
Ron?
Well, I just, got to say thank you to the Public Works Department, the Parks Department,